Push record.
Let's go.
All right, welcome to the Monday, August 8th, 2022 Board of Selectmen meeting. As always, we start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The divisions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first item, Consent Agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda as written.
Second, from Mr. Sullivan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain, I was not here. Appointments. First one. Alicia Figareto?
Figarito.
Figarito, sorry. Recreation Commission term to expire June 30th, 2025. You want to come up, be there to the podium or to the front and introduce yourself?
Hi, as you heard, my name's Alicia Figarito. I've been living in Dudley for four years now. I work at Worcester Academy and I'm the Director of Alumni Relations there, so I have a lot of fundraising and event experience and I'm excited to join the Recreation Commission. So, thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next. Cultural Council, Margaret Makuga, term to expire 6/30/2023, filling in remaining term of Cheryl Bernardo. Is Margaret here? Any comments from the board?
Just thank her for stepping forward, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Marcy.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Alicia Figarito, Figaritos, excuse me, to the Recreation Commission with a term to expire June 30th, 2025. Second.
Do you want, we didn't do that for the first one. Do you need that for an appointment?
Yeah, we do, yeah, we.
You want to make the motion for both?
Oh, yeah, we can.
I assume separate, Mr. Chairman, I think.
Okay.
Different terms.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you for coming forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia.
Appreciate it.
Nice to meet you.
And the next one?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Margaret Makuga to the Cultural Council with the term to expire June 30th, 2023, filling in the remaining term of Cheryl Bernardo.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd also like to thank Cheryl for her service.
Have the Town Administrator send a letter on your behalf thanking her for the service.
Excellent, thank you. Number four, Citizens Comments. Mr. Clark, please introduce yourself, street, Social Security.
No, not the social.
Oh, I'm sorry, not the social.
Richard Clark, 65 Airport Road, here in Dudley. And gentlemen, thank you very much. I appreciate the fact that you have an open agenda item for Citizens Comments. I have brought a few props along with me. And I regret to say that this is indeed a very small fraction of what is all over the town of Dudley. You can find them probably in the thousands. And again, it doesn't take a whole lot of looking to come across them. Those people that do the cleanup in the spring, I'm sure, find these almost everywhere. This is something that a gentleman was here not that long ago, as I recall, spoke about in banning the plastic bags. I apologize to him for bringing one with me, but this is something that I think we could seriously give consideration to. There's no return on these things. You can't bring them back anywhere, nobody's going to give you a nickel for them. The impact of this, obviously, is on a great many merchants in town or businesses in town. This is a handful of people that would be affected if we banned them. This is not a wheel that needs to be invented. Other towns in the Commonwealth, Chelsea, Attleboro, and Wareham have already banned them. It's under consideration or has been under consideration in the state of Rhode Island. There's no place for these things to go. They have the half-life of carbon 14, which is like 5,700 years. They will be here forever. They'll be here after you're gone and after I'm gone, and there'll be that many more of them. Somewhere, someday, we have to stop this. And today is probably a good, good place for us to give consideration to actually doing something about it. I appreciate.
Do you have a proposal, Mr. Clark?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a proposal, Mr. Clark?
My proposal is that I know that you authorize liquor licenses, that's my understanding, to the board when someone comes to transfer a liquor license or, or transact or move or renew, if you will. I would ask that provision B, that you can't sell these if you want your liquor license in the town of Dudley. And as I said, other towns have done it, and I've seen recently where the Attorney General's Office has actually ruled that the Wareham ordinance or bylaw is apparently legal and passes muster. So, it's not, again, it's not something that, you know, you have to make up out of whole cloth, it's not something that's brand new. It's other people are doing it, and I'm sorry to say, we're not the first, but being fourth isn't really terrible in this league.
Board? All right, we'll take it under advisement.
I wish you, I hope you would, and perhaps we can even actually get it to the town meeting someday, as we almost did with the plastic bags. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Town Administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As requested, we've been advertising for vacancies on boards and committees, not the least of which is for people that may be interested in becoming Dudley Cable Access Camera Operators. Michelle recently set up a quick interview with someone who was interested, a candidate with some background for this week, and we hope that's going to help us out, because I believe right now Ted's a one-man show. So, we're going to keep efforting that. As the board is, that's this week, right? As the board is aware, Michelle has been coordinating the Hometown Heroes Banner Program, which gives local families and even employers, if they're interested, the opportunity to recognize military members of our community, both past and present. So far, the program has received a great public response. The cost for a banner is $160, includes the screen printing and mounting hardware, and the town derives no profit, which was one of the first questions I got from the project. It's simply a way of recognizing the military service of members of our community. For more information with the Hometown Heroes Banner Program, please contact Michelle Jervis at 508-949-8001, or email selectaa@dudleyma.gov, or come in person to the Selectmen's Office. Further information, including more specific details and the order form, is available on the Town of Dudley Facebook page, or the town website through a link on the Veterans Agent page, the Board of Selectmen page, or the Town Administrator's page. This week, I will be participating tomorrow, as a matter of fact, in a Zoom call with Rich Matthew and Superintendent Lamarche relative to the operational override that, as the board and FAA are very much aware, I've been mentioning, will be absolutely required for the town to keep pace with the Regional School District Assessment, starting in FY24. We will be speaking with Mark Abrahams from the Abrahams Group. As the board may recall, the Abrahams Group is the independent firm that determined the size and scope of the last operational override for both the towns, including Charlton and the school district that passed back in 2018. As it stands now, September 6th will be the primary election, and it would appear that the capital override vote to fix several of the roofs on the district schools will happen at the same time. I would anticipate the operational override vote to fall in December, which is, if successful, will continue to provide tax revenue for the town to meet the district assessment without the guaranteed need to cut town services, which is the way it stands now, to meet the requirement. And then finally, next, at our next meeting, as part of the betterment discussions that we have been having with the residents of some of the private roads, that will likely be seeking to have their streets accepted this fall, I've asked Jeff Blake to come into the Board of Selectmen's meeting on August 22nd. He's going to answer some any specific legal questions that residents of those private roads may have. I've also asked Jeff Walsh, our Town Engineering Consulting, to attend for the same purpose, and a notice will be sent out this coming week to residents. Additionally, the developer of Eisenhower Drive is working with the Planning Board and the Water and Sewer Department to be in a position where Eisenhower Drive may very well be under warrant for the fall town meeting for acceptance. So, we're cautiously optimistic that several positive votes may take place in October. That's all I have for this week, Mr. Chairman.
All right, any questions for the Town Administrator?
Motion to accept Town Administrator's report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing, going to have a poll hearing. Petition from National Grid, number 30583971, Sawmill Road, Dudley, Mass. Anyone here to discuss that tonight, coming up? Tell us who you are. I'm going to open a hearing at...
6:53.
6:53.
Good evening. I'm Matt Vera, an engineer with National Grid. So, this project is with my colleague, Will Fontaine, and we are proposing a new poll, 3-50, to serve, a riser poll, actually, to serve a new location, a new house at 86 Samuel Road, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, that's pretty much it, simple project. It's a mid-span poll with a riser.
Any questions from the board?
So, Mr. Chair, that's the, are you familiar with that area? That's the driveway somebody just put in, kind of pretty far up. So, you're going to have to put poles, obviously, it doesn't matter what, you have to put poles on that driveway to get the power all the way to that property?
No, we're not going to put poles. We're proposing, yeah, underground. It's going to go through some splice boxes, two splice boxes, and then to a pad-mounted transformer at the end.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Pleasure of the board?
Close.
Let's close the hearing at 7... 6:55?
Mr. Chair, grant request from National Grid, number 30583971, Sawmill Road, to install a S4 pole, beginning approximately 530 feet, as noted in the public hearing.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
License and permits, Nichols College Outdoor Entertainment License, Sunday, August 28th, 2022, from 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM, located at the Copper Beach Quad for opening weekend activities, lawn games with DJ, staff will be on hand to monitor noise.
Hello, Heather Bowes from Nichols College. There was one mistake there, should actually be Saturday, 8:27. Not sure, I think that was my fault.
Go ahead. I'll make the corrections.
I'm going to make the correction.
Yeah, that's fine, just a question. Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chair, would the, would the applicant be willing to reduce by maybe one hour the DJ time, I think 10 o'clock's probably sufficient? We've asked in the past, they've always been accommodating.
I'm sorry, are you asking me or are you asking him?
Well, I have to ask the chairman if it's okay.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
I haven't said no yet, so it's always a direct.
Mr. Chair, would you be willing to end the entertainment an hour earlier, 10 o'clock, the DJ part?
I don't see it as a problem, I'm not in charge of that, but I'll let them know that they're done at 10.
I know they've been accommodating in the past, we very rarely let it go that long.
So, Michelle, you'll make the changes, 10:00 PM?
Yes.
Any other questions? No, it's a board's pleasure.
Oh, just the, sorry, Mr. Chair, they always question, he's not here. Can you speak to the police chief, is fire, fire EMS okay with it? Michelle Wayne must speak to it.
I was going back and forth with the chief, he had a few questions on the permit, the new online system.
Gotcha, check with chief and chief, all right, good.
That's it, I'm good now.
Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Nichols College Outdoor Entertainment License for Sunday, August 27th, 2022, from 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
Saturday, August 27th.
Oh, it's Saturday, August 28th, Saturday, August 27th, excuse me.
As amended.
As amended, from 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM. With the DJ, start 11:00. The event goes to 11 and the DJ stops at 10?
Yeah.
The what, I'm sorry?
Does the event go to 11 and the DJ stops at 10, is that?
We'll have the DJ stop at 10, I don't really.
No, but what about the whole event?
I mean, they'll be outside, but.
Just no music?
No music.
So, it can end at 11, just the DJ?
Yeah, DJ, music ending at 10.
8:00 AM to 11:00 PM, the DJ stopping at 10:00 PM, ruckus on the Copper Beach Quad, weekend activities.
Got that, Michelle?
I do.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks, Heather.
New business, gee, I missed a good one, rescind vote of special local election warrant. Dudley-Cheltenham Regional School District.
Mr. Chairman, that was a discussion that we had, and the board voted on for the town clerk here to post that, to move forward with a special election warrant for the capital improvement request for the school. Apparently, the Board of Selectmen does not have to vote on that, the school committee takes the vote on that, so we need to rescind the vote, and so the school committee can approve it.
Mr. Chair, and then what's the process that comes back to us with the?
Nope, it's all, it's, the school committee does it unilaterally.
We don't set the warrant, goes right to the ballot?
They have their own warrant, their own ballot.
That goes right to the clerk with it?
Correct.
Okay, so five passes us.
So, we're going to bring this back up?
Just make a motion to rescind.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we rescind our vote for, that we, from the special election warrant from two weeks ago.
You were hit that, right? I second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will abstain, I was not here for the original, 401. All right, fiscal year 2023, Town Administrator's Evaluation Planning Phase by September 1st, 2022, discussion.
Just putting it on the board's radar to kind of work on any adjustments that you want for my goals and objectives for FY23, as we discussed, it's in everybody's folder. And that's going to be Section 2 of my evaluation. Everything else is standard.
We're going to collate our information through you to include in this document? Do you have like a certain goal we want to bring up?
Yes.
Get them all to you?
Yep, why don't you send them all to me to the town email?
I'm sorry, you want to send it through Michelle, she can probably get them to you forward.
Yes, why don't you send Michelle, thank you, Michelle, in advance? All right.
Excellent.
Thank you. Old business, Board of Selectmen vote to adopt policy or policies as recommended by Town Administrator and Labor Council, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Chairman, I have three items in the, in your packet tonight for you to review. You don't have to take any action tonight if you wanted to have time to review it. The first is language for the police lieutenant, that was recommended by Labor Council, which is pretty simple and straightforward. The next one deals with a draft code of ethics, which was drafted almost entirely by Labor Council. And then the third one is... The third one is just simply adding Juneteenth as a recognized state holiday to our personnel policy and procedures. So, there's three things for you to look at and vote to adopt tonight, next week, next week, next month, whenever you want to do it. I just want to put it on your radar screens.
So, this has already been vetted by council, Mr. Chair, did the administrator?
Everything has been vetted through council and written by council.
It's been vetted, I don't see, and we, Mr. Chair, I don't see any reason to kick the can if we all feel...
As the board may recall, we have, we have a grant in progress that's going to require additional personal policy changes, so I thought we'd just kind of get our feet wet with the first three, which are pretty straightforward and amusing.
Separate votes, Mr. Chairman, for each.
As recommended by the administrator.
It's a board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the recommended changes, a policy adoption recommended by the Town Administrator, as written. Second.
So, that would include, Mr. Chairman, the draft code of ethics?
Yeah.
The police lieutenant language and the Juneteenth holiday.
Okay. So, we have second, we have discussion, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say it's, I think it's a good thing that we have a code of ethics. Most businesses of size, and Dudley is a business, it has size, it should have, have such a policy. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, next, we'll send those out to all the affected departments tomorrow, and then it will become effective after everyone's received it.
Great. All right, departmental communication. Jeff?
So, first of all, the sidewalk project on the Mason Road, sidewalks is progressing while they'll be completing within the next couple of weeks. Most of the sidewalk are in the, there's a couple of driveways that they're working on and the walkway in front of the, in front of the school, so that's probably a little bit, about a week or so ahead of schedule. Also, the Dudley-Oxford Road milling will begin on Wednesday. It was originally supposed to begin last Wednesday, but got pushed off due to the contract of having other obligations, so it'll be about two days there and then about a day on Mason Road, and the paving will, will happen after that, so a rave alert will go out tomorrow. Because we also have the sign that we borrowed from the fire department out on Dudley-Oxford Road to alert people to that, and the work will take place over about the next week, week to week and a half. And that's about, that's about all for...
So, that'll be all cleaned up by school staff?
The intention is to have all of the work done with, with the sidewalk, and assumedly the, the same contractor that's doing the milling work or the cold plating for us is also the contractor that does the cold plating and paving for the, the water department, for their project, so with any kind of luck, all of the work will be done and completed before the, before school opens, with, with the exception of possibly the, the loaming and seeding. The intention is to wait until the, the very end of the project to have that done, it's not a, not conducive right now, obviously, to, to loaming and seeding, will have more weed growth than, than grass. So, that's about it.
Mr. Chair? Jeff, just for the record, what, from what to what is the paving, for people at home? From the pier, pier point to the second?
Dudley-Oxford Road will be paved from the Oxford line all the way to a point between Hayden Pond and Pear Pond, where there's a seam in the paving right now where they had left off several, about, I think it was about five or six years ago that they did some paving over there. And on Mason Road, we'll be paving from full width, we're going to do a cold plain and full width paving from Dudley-Oxford Road to June Street, where the, where the water contract leaves off. So, it's, that's about a 1,400-foot stretch and about 8,600 feet of Dudley-Oxford, so just short of two miles of paving that'll take place, and that's courtesy of the Winter Recovery Program, so.
Excellent.
Fantastic.
Thanks, Jeff.
Mr. Clark?
Mr. Chairman, it's not out of order, a question for Mr. Murray, it would...
Is this out of order, or do we?
No.
No, go ahead.
Go ahead, thank you. The bridge, is there a date associated with that, any kind of date at all, any kind of timeline involved here?
So, we've, we've been working with Ty and Bond, who's done preliminary design, the big, the big holdup with the bridge is funding issues. We've actually recently had some discussion to get some ideas to try and expedite that, and we hope to be able to perform some of the demolition work that would bring us to a, a starting point to put out to, for an RFP, and possibly come up with some funding if something comes through from the state, and that would be a temporary, for a temporary bridge. Temporary being an, an acro bridge that we're, we're told in some cases remain in place for 50-plus years, so. It's an indeterminate amount of time, and it's very, very slow-moving through the, through the bridge program through the state. There was just a meeting on the 131 Bridge last week with Mast DOT I was involved in, it was a Zoom meeting, and that's been on the tip for, I believe, four years or five years, and that's still in progress, so it's unfortunately a very slow-moving progress on, on that, but again, we hope to be able to perform the demolition work, fund that through Chapter 90, and, and be able to move forwards with gaining funding for the, the temporary replacement.
Mr. Chairman, I would say that without question, on a weekly basis, we're in contact with our legislators and so forth to try to get some source of funding, it's always, there's always something dangled and you get close to it, but then you don't, you don't qualify for it for one reason or another, or you put, get put on a tip sheet, which is the worst-case scenario, because you're on the tip sheet, and we can push that through, but we can push it through in five years from now. So, we've kind of taken a look at, maybe we, we look at this project in two sections, we use Chapter 90 to take the bridge down and demo it, is what we're working on right now, and get it into a position where they can bid on the reconstruction, plus the modular bridge that's being provided by Mast dot, which would be the, the best, quickest, and most cost-effective scenario we have right now. It's something that's always on our radar screen.
All right, so the ask would be, we want to hit every date that the town has control over and pressure the state to move their dates up.
As, as John said, we've, we've met with the local rep and Senator on a regular basis. It would seem that, based on what you hear on the news with the infrastructure bill, that there would be, you know, money forthcoming for these types of things. There hasn't been any guidance given. There hasn't been any guidance given for any of that money, to my knowledge, yet on a, on a state level, so.
That's right. There's a lot of money, it's just, no, there's no criteria, guidance been established or nothing that's been eligible for.
Possibly with the election of a new governor, there might be some movement on...
Talking about the federal solar bill?
No. There's, there's a lot, there is a lot of different sources of funding, state revenue and federal revenue. Some of the federal revenue that was awarded to the state hasn't been decided on how they can spend it yet, so it's sitting there waiting, just as we are.
Understood, thank you.
They probably suggested the state take it out of the 2-point-something billion in excess revenue they collected.
Possibly.
Instead of giving it to the people.
Thank you.
Might end up just at 1:20, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening. I just wanted to inform the board that our car seat program is going very well. We've installed or planned to install through appointment almost all the car seats we had. There's only a few left. We intend on reapplying for the grant next year. I was very well-received, and I think it's a very positive thing for the community. We gave one car seat to any Dudley resident that called, and it only took us three or four weeks to go through 50-something car seats, I think it was 53 or 54, so, of all different sizes, booster seats, infant seats, and one middle-sized seat. So it went very well, so we're very pleased.
Thanks, Chief. Thanks, Chief. George.
Good evening. Just some information on our Bates tank. It's just about ready to be filled again. We're sorry again for all the inconvenience and problems, and like I said, that we're not out of the woods yet till it is full. So expecting them to do that come the end of this week, do it very slowly, and probably by next week we should be in business, probably midweek right now. From there on, goes to the next tank, as I explained earlier in the season, to Dresser Hill. And again, that's probably going to be the same issue we had with this one with problems and stuff, because even with the engineers doing hydraulic models, nothing's etched in stone, and nothing goes right. So we're kind of stocking up material and going to be putting words out and information out when that begins, so get everybody prepared. So that's all I have.
Any questions to George?
Thank you, George.
Thanks, George. Rich.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. Thank you. If anybody was in the back, they noticed a trailer. No one's squatting. It's a driver sim from Maya. You don't drive around the old Fort Devens anymore, you get an electronic simulator, much like Formula One, so I'm sure if you wanted to play Smokey and the Bandit, they could give you a good five-minute setup. It's part of our credits, so as much as it might be enjoyable, it's to reinforce some driving safety. Previous meetings, we've gone through, there's money available to do things, not necessarily cash funds, but money apportioned for the town of Dudley to engage in these activities. Some items are of no cost, to go through an online training or an in-person training, marginal cost for it, but there's rewards. The whole idea is we get into the habit of doing things better, loss prevention, and with one efficiency becomes the next one. So it's good to see that there. I want to say there was an eight- or 10-month wait for it. We had a Hampshire Council of Governments Insurance Trust meeting, they have their quarterly meetings. The big takeaway from there is there's a lot of information available online, hcgit.org has a lot of things there. They don't print out the health manuals anymore that says you have a copay and what have you, but there's a way around it. If you go there, it's going to give you the link to the MyBlue page and the MyBlue app in addition to the CVS Caremark app. So at one point, if you're on vacation and you lose your wallet, you go, oh my, you have the ability to digitally retrieve your healthcare information. Blue Cross is doing this, so security is of the utmost, but that was one of the things that they put forward, as in loss prevention, as in health. They want you to go through and be engaged. They don't want the, the fitness buff, you know, just wasting their time. They want to think of other things, the physicality, the, the mental portion of health. You want to engage the person who doesn't exercise. There's a whole bunch of things, a healthy me, and there's also a wellness app where you can go through and get your Apple iWatch tied into things. You can have not quite a Peloton-grade workout, but there are on-demand yoga classes so that you're not sitting there by yourself going, this isn't fun. There's, there's some engagement in there. There's also cooking recipes, things like that. The whole idea, each year, there's money set aside to help you help yourself. And again, a little bit of efficiency leads to a little bit more. Now we have to talk about taxes. We've closed out the 2022, names are going to go in the paper shortly. 23 taxes are out there again, that's the legal page, instead of it being two, eight-and-a-half by elevens. Water sewer went out on a letter-sized as well. Lot of telephone calls because the rate increases had gone through. Obviously, if there's any questions, you can get things verified. If you notice, we had some excise bills come out, and I have some colored paper. I have a vendor out there who, as a courtesy to the town of Dudley, prints on their paper. So it's very nice to be able to do something a little bit nicer, and there are some people who got some pink bills. Pink bills are the demand bills. It means you missed that payment, and there's additional fines and fees for it. My, my one closing remark is, we had some people who paid with Unipay, and they had some issues. I went on and paid with Unipay, didn't have an issue at all. Happy to take positive feedback as far as Unipay. The bill design is set by our software company, so you were used to an old system. The new system is, I don't want to say legally correct, but the, the format fits all of the statute, it has the correct information, it's got the collector of taxes, names, and offer, office hours and what have you. Happy to take feedback like that, as well as, you know, much as we don't want people out now, happy to still take a, a payment over the counter. You got a question, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, a couple of questions. I'm catching up from vacation, and I think you are too, right? I got a pile of stuff that I'm trying to go through. Of course. By next meeting, can you check on, there's a question about a Brandon Road water bill?
Yep, there is. And it's, it's been decided. The 4057 was adopted by the town of Dudley, and the whole idea is you shouldn't be installing a giant deck with a hot tub in it if you owe real estate taxes. And with developers, this, this is the town's leverage to get the bills paid. The only exception to that would be the building commissioner going through and saying, your, your roof blew off this evening, we need to get it repaired immediately, and would issue a permit regardless of the payment status. It'd be considered an emergency repair. So I'm, I'm not sure I, I quite understand the question. We have a significant amount due, and I spent quite a bit of time in discussion with several people regarding the matter. And how do I go through and have a permit for you, but not for you, and you both owe the same amount? In my opinion, it's, it's a, it's a black and white issue. There, there's a reason the, the forms get filled out. Your, Mr. Clark mentioned a liquor license. If you're an applicant for a liquor license, you should be paid up in full when coming in, coming to the, in front of the board requesting that your, your permit be granted or renewed annually.
Got you. Any questions on that?
I mean, that's...
So...
Yeah, and it's a fine line, so for people at home, we're not trying to be obtuse, but in my opinion, the totality of the circumstances of this issue, I feel, requires some, some, some form of either communicating to the person or the scenario that was laid out in the email. Can't we, can't we tailor our response to something that was proposed? Like, it's hard to, it's probably shouldn't be discussed much further.
I believe the email, Mr. Chairman, that you received is a thumbnail of the discussion that I had. I probably got two hours into this, and in all fairness, I need, I need, I need to be the, the person who signs off for your permit, but not for your permit, and I need it to be defensible. I think the information that was provided did not include other parts of the conversation that were there.
So maybe, maybe I'm missing something on it. The other question was borrowing for the brine equipment. If you could check on that, see what, give us a date on when you think you finish that up.
We have a few items coming up. We have, we have a fire, we have a police unit, we have a brine equipment, and the two cab and chassis for 350 penciled in, funds in hand first week in September. That's, that's, that's sort of the plan.
For all of those?
For those, well, that's what I have a green light for. So it'd be just those vehicles? Five vehicles?
Thank you.
So a question on that too, Mr. Chairman? I still, I still want to revisit that Brandon Road, maybe I can talk to treasurer individually. At the last meeting, Rich, you, you gave an example, well, for something about 900, we talked like 500,000, 900,000, and you gave an example of Newton North High School. When, when have we ever had to bundle to a certain amount to borrow, to bond? I don't, I don't, like, you were saying that the last meeting, and I'm probably, if I miss a step, I'm sorry, you said the vote gets to the clerk's office, she gives you the results of the vote, and I think your words were almost instantaneously, things can go to bond council. But then we talked about having to, like you just said, five vehicles, get to a certain amount. What was the vote, May? Right, it was a ballot question for the brine, for example.
Funding, yeah.
Yeah, now we're talking about September. I don't, I don't recall, I could be wrong, I don't recall a big delay like that on items in the past, or not all items, but I don't, I don't also recall bundling to get to a certain threshold.
No bundling's necessary for, for a specific threshold. We've borrowed $25,000. It, it's, it's a matter of, if we're going to do it, it was, we're going to take delivery of the police vehicle approximately this time, fire vehicle this time, the brine machine is ready now, and the, the 350, the, the two items, maybe November, December. Trying, trying to optimize, and if you, if, if we need to have money tomorrow morning, we can negotiate a rate and get everything to be, to be settled. The idea was to have a, a bit of efficiencies.
We're just hoping to get the work done in a timely manner.
At the, at the, at the cost that we have, that was approved.
Right, because now the cost, the cost has changed.
Especially in an inflationary period, I guess, that's the tough part, right? The longer, the longer, the longer it takes to acquire the money, the more we're going to have to acquire it.
So, Mr. Chairman, so the requests that you just talked about, those are already at bond council waiting approval?
They've already been approved. They were from an earlier issuance, earlier town meeting.
Now I'm really confused, so then how come we haven't begun to make the purchases on all of them? Something, I know you talked about police cruises, I believe those are in the pipeline, but if I'm, if I'm missing a step, somebody please help me here, because I was on the assumption we didn't have authority to borrow the money to pay for it, the brine, for example. Am I, am I missing something?
We were waiting, we were waiting for the return of the election from the middle of June, so that they could be dead-excluded. Correct?
I'm saying, I need some help here. Am I missing, am I missing a step? Jeff?
Sounds like we've got to do some homework.
No. We had on the election, when Mr. Landry won his seat on, there were two questions. Shall the town exempt from Proposition 2 and 1/2, the five public safety vehicles, and the brine vehicle? The equipment for it? That was the only delay for, for those, on the idea that we could go through, get the money borrowed, be able to put it on the assessor's tax rate hearing ahead of time. And I sent out my emails, who needs what? And there are three of the, well, three of the vehicles there would be for the dead-exclusion, and then the other two were almost jumping the gun, they're not ready. So that's the only real, any, any delay at all.
All right, thanks for the clarification.
Mr. Chair, just to add to that, two weeks ago at our last meeting, I was asking for some clarification, got educated by Mr. Kamnani. And I, I see where Selectman Sullivan is questioning this, because my understanding, the town voted on October of last year to approve the borrowing of the money, 110,000 for the brine. And when it was put on the ballot, that was how it was going to get paid back this May. So it was already approved last year, and for 110,000, okay? And I clarified, how long does it take from that vote to get it through bond, to get the green light? If you meet the threshold that you told me was 500,000 to use bond? And you said one month. So we're talking 10 months now, almost a full year, when it was already approved. Yep, go ahead and borrow that for the brine, 110,000.
It was my understanding, Mr. Landry, that the important part was to be able to get them dead-excluded.
And that prevented this from being acted upon since October?
The, again, we weren't going to borrow the money if we didn't have the money in the budget to pay for them.
All right, sounds like we need more homework. Thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rich.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Board members' comments, did I get everybody? Yes. Board members' comments. Mr. Landry?
Yes, sir. Again, I want to thank Mr. Kamnani for educating me on this as well, because obviously I have a lot of questions I'm not going to have, I don't know what the answers are to them. So I want to thank him, along with all the other department heads, for educating me, and, and the board as well. It's a learning process for me, and when I hear everybody with the experience more than I, asking the questions that I, I know I have the answers to, and then see another answer given that can smoke up the whole thing that was, I thought was cleared up, apparently wasn't, and then wonder why, when the questions were asked last time, we got different answers, or not the answers that were given today. So that's where communication is, is key. I, I think, like you said, we have more homework and...
Yeah, it always is, right? Because the worst thing I hate is email communication that can be clarified in a five-minute conversation. So the five-minute conversation, what we have right now, I learned a few things, and need to go back and probably figure out some more stuff. It's very important.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Kerry?
I just wanted to acknowledge the, the people who were recognized by the district attorney recently for the fire at Brandon Road. I mean, we, we've said it all along, we have great people working for us here, we have great people who live here, and it, it was good to see someone outside of Dudley recognize those people for their good work. Other than that, that's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sully?
Yeah, I just want to, you know, acknowledge it's been some difficult weather with the heat and everything, as we talked about with COVID. Check on your neighbors. There's people out there that probably could use a helping hand, whether you have to help them put an AC unit in or a fan or, just check on your neighbors, be kind. Echo the chief on his car seat program. I did not receive a free car seat, but I used the services of firefighter Benoit when I put the car seat in my wife's vehicle for our grandchild and it's a good process down there. Those guys really take it serious. I mean, Scotty had me in there for about an hour going through the manual with me and it's something that you don't know until you have to need it. It's like a little small program that nobody knows about, but I just want to say thank you to everybody and again, thank Rich for some of the information tonight and I thank Mr. Landry for doing a better job, I guess, than I did putting some things to words. Because I'm still a little confused, but like I said, I'll talk to, I can reach out to Rich individually and we can discuss it. Thank you. Happy 50th birthday to the chairman.
29th.
Thought I was getting out of here unscathed.
No, and I acknowledge his wife who's on the board of health for academic progress also. Happy birthday, old boy.
Thank you very much. John?
Sully stole mine. Happy birthday, Mr. Chairman, welcome to the club. 50 and also, I want to thank Michelle for the banner program we talked about earlier. I think that is something that's going to generate a lot of interest and, and pride in Dudley, so I wanted to say that.
Excellent. Just a reminder, you're getting a lot of notifications about water usage. You know, everyone's lawns look pretty tough right now and, you know, if you got to give up the lawn so we have drinking water, you know, it's probably a no-brainer, right? So, make sure you conserve and like Mr. Sullivan said, you know, this heat is, it's tough on the, the neediest, so keep an eye out for everybody. Or head down to the library, Mr. Clark, right? Cool off, read a book.
Well, we're only open Monday and Thursday till eight. We maybe give some consideration to that. We don't have cooling centers in town. I guess the library would probably function as the only one that is open to all residents.
Oh, we've got a half hour left to, to get cool.
We can, I can open on my... Can you open cooling centers? But I feel the need to do it.
Okay, well, if this goes on much longer, maybe the need will be there, but in any event, the library could function, if you will, as a cooling center of sorts.
Got you. Thank you very much. So, you know, thank you all, we'll do this again. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
In unanimous. Thank you. Good night.